It's seven thirty Danielle, seven, actually seven thirty-two, I think.
Yes.
If my, if my time and your time are the same. So why don't we, uh, why don't we do, uh, minutes? Mr. Carol, can you make a motion on the minutes?
Yes, I can. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm just trying to pull up the.
It's all right. Takes a second.
Agenda here. Mr. Chairman, I'd like move to approve the minutes to January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
A second. A motion.
I'll second it, Chris.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Pierce. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
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 Well, you got a roll call.
Right. Mr. Carol?
Aye.
Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mr. Hayden is aye, is, I don't think anyone else is on. Is that correct, Danielle?
I don't see anyone else on unless the iPhone is, um, David Rudolph, though I.
Right, and I can't see. Right, unless they open up and tell us.
Hi, the iPhone is Tina Sawyer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. All right, so we have, uh, three in favor and David and Jeremiah are not at the meeting right now. So the minutes are approved. We could do the zoning. I think Danielle, what do you think?
Yeah, why don't we get that one done? It's just a home occupation, so probably pretty quick. So this is.
It's for Summer Street, correct?
Yes, Sumner.
Sumner, yes.
Sumner, sorry.
A home occupation for a painting business.
Yeah, to Sumner Street. All right, I mean, it's, I think, uh, what do you think, Warren, uh, neighbors?
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I mean, just, just basically follow the rules. I mean, they're allowed to have a truck there and they're, uh,
Yeah, one truck.
Off the space, one, just one.
One truck, yeah.
And, um, yeah, so I would say that, um, as long as they follow the, um, the bylaw, uh, I don't see anything in this that's other than relatively normal operation because they can only paint in place once, you know?
That's correct, that's correct.
Be in somebody else's house, so, but I would say that's pretty innocuous, pretty straightforward use of the bylaw.
That's correct. How about you, Ryan?
Any problems? I agree, no issue here.
Okay, so Danielle, if we could just send along, you know, file the bylaw, uh, the two hundred forty-two.
Okay.
Yeah, we have no, we have no concerns.
Yeah. All right. All right. So we're back to. You want to do an update for us?
Sure, um, they're pretty brief and mostly they have to do with some upcoming dates. Um, oh, I actually just need to make sure I'm not missing letting anyone in. Oh, one moment. Here comes Jeremiah.
Oh, that's good.
And a couple of others, okay. Um, okay, I will do my updates. Um, so a few, um, meetings are coming up related to the sewer project and, um, I have emailed this out, but I just wanted to mention it in case anyone hasn't seen their email. Um, this Thursday, there's going to be a meeting of boards and committees, um, all together at the Distance Learning Lab. It's also hybrid, so if anyone who is away would like to call in, uh, they can, um, just to discuss the sewer project. So, um, that's happening at seven, um, Thursday, March second, um, at the Distance Learning Lab. Then, uh, March sixth is a special town meeting, um, for the citizens petition to repeal the betterment by law. Um, March eighth is the first public info session for sewer. I'll be attending that, um, I assume, I mean, of course, if CPC members want to come, of course you can. It's just, it, the, the, the board and committee meeting is happening this week, but, um, I'll, I'll be going to all the info sessions. April fifth, another, uh, info session for sewer. That one will be all virtual and then April twelfth, uh, there will be, um, uh, another in-person meeting at the Distance Learning Lab. So those are some upcoming dates, uh, relating to sewer. Um, I did just want, also want to discuss with you because we have, uh, there is a town meeting on March sixth and, um, a public info session for sewer on March eighth. I don't know whether we want to have the March seventh meeting too. Um, and if we don't want to discuss it now, if you'd rather wait till the end of the meeting to see what other business there might be, um, certainly we can wait, but I just wanted to bring it up as a possibility. Um, that meeting would be a week from tonight, so if we want to still have it, we can, but if not, we can talk about not having it.
Okay.
Um, in other news, um, this Friday is the deadline for us applying, the town applying for the housing choice designation. I've been working on the application for that. Um, this is a program that enables us to access additional grant funding from the state and it also, um, allows the town to get a better, uh, bond rating in some cases for certain types of borrowing, so it's pretty important. Um, and we, I plan to submit it. We've already met the criteria, which is that we have, um, increased our building permit activity for housing by more than five percent over five years. Um, so that's good. That really does give us access to additional, uh, grant funding. Um, the budget meeting, um, will be either March thirteenth or twenty-seventh. I haven't heard yet, but when I do hear, um, when the CPC budget will be, I will, I will let you know. Um, we also are hoping to do some C, uh, EDC appointments, uh, some joint appointments, um, on whichever night that is because we have a couple of members who are, um, whose terms are expiring. Um, that is all I have for my own updates. Didn't know if anyone had any questions about any of that.
No, I think that's good. Hi, Jeremiah. You're muted, sir.
How's it going, everybody?
Good, 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 good. So, um, the next meeting Danielle, which is eight o'clock. We gotta try to get David in, all right?
We do need David for Park Street. Um, we certainly can, um, open the hearing for the Anthony Road subdivision, um, with only four members. That's fine. He can always, uh, catch up by reviewing, um, the recording, but, um, yeah, for Park Street, we do need, we do need, um, we do need David for Park Street.
All right. So I wonder where he is. I could find out.
Probably in the air, trying to get on the wifi and trying to, um, trying to connect to the meeting. I'm keeping an eye on the waiting room. I'll just going through to see if I see anyone in here. Looks like it could be him.
Cause we got twenty minutes before that actual meeting. Warren, do you have anything?
Sure. Nope, um, I just, I wasn't sure how that would work out with Dave because having been down this road before, I, um,
Yeah, I know.
Wifi on the airplane is not as reliable as you would hope.
Right, he's gonna be on the ground, supposedly on the ground at eight twenty-six, so.
Yeah.
And then this, by eight thirty, his cell phone will work.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe a little later than that by the time he gets out of the.
Well, he'll have, he'll, he'd probably get on it before he got out.
Maybe, I'll see.
Oh, actually, um, back to scheduling questions, um, I did want to ask you, um, because there's a special town meeting on March sixth. I didn't know whether, I, I kind of assumed you didn't want to, but if you did, I'll schedule it, um, whether the CPC wanted to have a meeting prior to town meeting. Um, this is just with regard to the repeal of the betterment by law, so I, I didn't think that you wanted to, but I, I can schedule if.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Probably not. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Yeah, probably, um, you should, yeah, we, I, I would say you're right, Chris. I would say let's, let's wait, let's see how this shakes out.
Yeah. What's the, what's the special time meeting number these days?
Oh, for a quorum?
Yes.
Hundred and fifty.
Thank you.
Give me two, Rich.
Just if I, if we didn't hear last night, I wouldn't have known the number.
Exactly, same.
Well, I knew somebody would know. That's, that's why I asked.
We asked last night.
There you go. Well, thanks for the info. His scheduled arrival time was supposed to be ten fourteen this morning.
Oh, man.
Yeah. It's eight twenty, eight twenty-four is his scheduled time right now.
I just need to ask a question. What is the betterment that you guys are talking about?
That. Danielle, can you answer that quick?
Sure, um, so last, um, June town meeting, um, the one of the Warren articles, um, changed what the betterment by law was. The town had a betterment by law and that was, um, a set of regulations for what's supposed to happen when the town and or people who live along a street want to make an improvement such as street paving or in, installing some kind of infrastructure like a water main or sewer or whatever the infrastructure may be. And it had a, um, a, a set scheme for how it gets financed and how the procedure goes and in June, a new, um, that some changes were passed at town meeting that, um, that changed and made the betterment by law a little bit different so that it did not necessarily, um, dictate, I think it was a fifty-fifty split that residents were responsible for previously. And I think it made it into a situation where it was more flexible and, um, Lee, and I think you probably, uh, know the detail a bit better on this.
They're explaining it perfectly.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll jump in if you're not.
Yeah, okay. Um, and I think that the reason to do it would be so that, um, there would be more flexible options, um, for possible ways of financing, uh, sewer construction. And, um, so a citizen, so that passed, but there has been a citizens petition that's been, uh, received, um, and a special town meeting scheduled, um, uh, in order to, to repeal that so that it would go back to the original by law, which was the fifty-fifty split.
There was an entire informational meeting last night about it for the public.
And the only thing I'll add is that the, um, it was a good explanation, Danielle. The only thing I'll add is that the, 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 um, how can I say it? It's kind of like states versus federal government. The, um, the previous betterment rules and the new one that they're proposing, which is the same as the old one, allowed any individual street to basically, when we're talking about this, to kill a project. So they, it re, it gave a street the ability to kill a project for the whole town if they wanted to. And so, but when the betterment law was created, by law was originally created, nobody was really thinking sewer. I think it's.
Exactly.
Thing, so, um, you know, it becomes a question of, you know, is, is, does the community have the overall vote or can a local neighborhood veto? Um, you know, what would benefit the town overall? And that's, that's basically what happens is it can go, it, it, it would be a torturous path for us to get anything done.
We wouldn't be able to.
Project. You'd only need one neighborhood to kill it and then there'd be no option. There's, so, you know, the, the original, um, the new one allows for more flexibility. Now, at the end of the day, the town still has to vote for it, so that's the fail safe is like, no matter what, no matter what anybody comes up with, you know, that there is, there is, um, if it doesn't get voted, it doesn't get approved, so we have to do it over again or kick it down the, down the road. But the, the other one, you could have one neighborhood kill the whole project. And so that's the, that's really the big difference between the two.
So how long or how many times does a project get kicked? If a neighborhood were to veto something that could happen?
So I, I can, we used an example last night about Swan Pond who, you know, the neighborhood wanted to pave um, their, their street and one person didn't want it and killed the whole thing for everybody. So basically if this, if it goes back to that, I mean, uh, I, 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 I don't. It can't work.
What do you mean by can't work then?
So, excuse, excuse me, ma'am.
Yeah, it's not, we're not here for that.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're way off topic for the planning commission.
Okay.
And, all right, so, um, I would go.
Norcam.
Yeah, go to Norcam and it was recorded last night.
Okay.
Um, all right, and you'll hear that whole discussion that they had and probably answer all your questions, okay?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, no, no problem.
Kill some time.
I, I gotta, I've gotta stay within, within what, uh, I can talk about during, during this meeting also. And that's kind of outside of the four corners of this meeting.
Sounds great, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so we, we do have to wait and there's nothing else we're working on, right, Danielle, that we have in the agenda?
The only other item on the agenda was the accessory dwelling unit by law, which I wouldn't recommend trying to have that discussion in twelve minutes and without.
No.
It either, so, um, I think that's one he'll want to be, you know, present for.
He should be present for that one.
I agree. And then the others are just the two timed public hearings, so.
Right.
All we have.
Okay. Let me just see if I can, uh, I mean, he, he's not late yet, late yet, so.
No, no. Um, we couldn't start it until eight anyway.
Yeah, well. I hate to be just sitting here not doing anything.
Well, the question is, what happens if David doesn't make it, say, till nine thirty or something? Ten o'clock, you know.
Well, I mean, we could, we could push the meeting till eight thirty, I think, but well, you know, we're gonna be, we've got nothing going on till eight thirty.
I don't think we can, well, the question is this, can we open a public hearing and then just let it lay open and then open another public hearing?
We can.
We can.
You can have two public hearings open at the same time?
Hearing stays open for a matter of weeks or months or however long it, um, you know, the hearing gets continued, it doesn't close until we're really done with it. So.
Yeah, I mean, we can move from meeting to meeting to meeting, but can we do it within a meeting?
You, you can.
Yeah. We can do that, Warren. We've done it before.
Not that I can recall. Have two public hearings open at the same time?
Well, they're open right now. They, they've been continued to a different date and time, that's all. They're actually still open.
Yeah.
We haven't closed them.
Yeah.
Continuing and does not close them.
Well, if, if that was absolutely true, it wouldn't have to be waiting to a time certain.
The waiting to the time certain is to make sure people
Yeah.
that want to be there can be there.
Yeah.
So we'll have, that's why you gotta, you gotta leave the, that one open. And if it runs past the eight thirty timeframe to, um, you know, open that, the eight thirty-one.
Hey, guys, Chris has, his flight scheduled to land at eight thirty-five.
Oh, changed, huh?
Yep.
It was just eight twenty-four, so. Oh, where, are you and I are looking at different, uh, flights? Yeah, I just saw eight, eight twenty-four here, so I don't know. So.
Thanks for the update.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm playing with two iPads and a phone right now, Ryan, so. You're probably better off than I am.
So you can tell us when it's gonna land, but it's ten hours late.
Yeah.
The jet below?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Why, why did I know that?
Yeah.
Good news is he's in the front row, so no excuses for get, taking a long time to get off the plane. Row one, you got it made.
I had missed that.
I have something to talk about if you want to. I was gonna leave it up to Danielle, but you can discuss it tonight.
Yes, Dan, uh, Debbie, what's up?
Um, if someone buys a house in a development and there is a, um, detention pond on the property with an easement, can they ask for the easement to go away because they say that there's no water that goes into this area, that it goes on the opposite side of the street?
Nope. No, that's, that's an easement to the town.
Yeah.
So they can, they may, they can maintenance it. Um, and today there may not be any water in it, but, um, you may have water in it.
There may have been water a couple of years ago when we had that really wet summer.
Right.
It's a, it's a very new subdivision. It hasn't been, um, actually accepted yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, I mean, I think most of the houses are built, but it hasn't come for street acceptance yet.
Yeah.
It's, um, it's Eaton Circle.
Yeah.
Yeah. And this, they have a, they have a, they have a detention pond here that has no water in it?
Yeah, that hasn't had it all. They said that they, somebody, I don't know if it was the prior owners planted trees and flowers, but of course everything's died off, so he's the one that goes out and mows it and keeps it clean, but he said that there's no, he's never seen water.
Yeah, well, he hasn't owned it long enough.
Well, also, also that easement is to the town and, and if that, and the, the thing is, if he, if the easement was removed, then the homeowner, they would have the right to like fill it in and make it into a dog cause or something.
Well, that's exactly what he wants to do is fill it in.
I can't, you can't do that because that subdivision was approved based on, uh, uh, based on the, um, all the drainage calculations and, and, and water flow calculations done by the engineer. So I don't think you can, uh, I don't.
Yeah.
You have to almost re, you have to re, you have to refile that whole subdivision and prove that it wasn't necessary.
Oh, okay, I did.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, that, that, I mean, that, this, uh, drainage pond up in the front has got water in it all the time because that's the way it was designed. The water table is really close there.
Okay.
You know, he.
He did say across the street.
Across the street.
That, the, oh, on that side, they get the water, but not on his side.
Yeah, just, you know, that same street on the, the.
Yeah.
Water on the left, on the right, no, behind, what?
Nothing on the left?
But they got that hill on the left too, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like.
There's not been enough, uh, rain runoff for that to collect there. But that's what it's for.
Okay, I was just, I was curious. I wasn't sure if you'd.
That's, that's okay.
I told him that the engineer would probably have to take a look at it or whatever and I, but I wasn't sure, so we can just let him know.
Yeah.
That, I figured it would have to stay, but, because I've never heard of them going away.
They never go away. That's what an easement is all about.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, six minutes is, uh, is the, the group from, uh, is.
Anthony Road?
Anthony Road?
Yeah, no, not Anthony Road, but forty, one forty-six and one fifty Park Street. Are they here? I can't.
I see many of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, I see Mr. Latham now.
Yes.
As soon as he took off his speak, his, his mute on his speaker, I, his name cleared right up for me. So Brad, I don't know if you've, uh, if you've been listening in, but we do have a quorum issue right now.
Well, I appreciate that. I, uh, I understand the weather conditions and I got a heads up from Danielle that one of your members may be stuck somewhere in transit.
Yeah, he's on a plane right now. We're waiting for him to land and hopefully, I don't think he can get on. Uh, he's probably on the internal wifi that's not, um, going outside of the plane. Um.
Understood. Well, can, can we wait for second call to see if he might be able to hook in?
We, we can, we can, I, you know, we can wait. The problem is, is we got nothing between now and eight thirty. So we're just gonna be sitting around.
Is, is Bruce on? I can't see whether Bruce is on.
Danielle.
I haven't seen.
I think I heard him. Bruce, was that you, Bruce?
I do not see him on the index.
I don't see him.
Oh, if he's not there, then he's not.
I see Peter, um, I mean, if this, if this absent a quorum, then I think we have no choice but to request it be put on for the next meeting.
Well, we could do that. We could also, I mean, it would, it might be old, I mean, it might be later, but it, we could do it after Anthony Road. I mean, it's, obviously it's up to, you know, what you want to do.
Are you gonna stay in session, uh, for a while anyway?
We have an eight thirty public hearing.
Then how about if we wait till after that and see if we are able to, uh, attract a quorum by then?
All right. I guess.
It's kind of what we were thinking about.
Okay, thank you. And let, let's go for that.
All right, so if anybody wants to go off and do something for a half an hour there, welcome to. Um, I, that's the, not the, not the board. We won't be talking about uh, seven, seventeen Anthony and three forty-six R. Haverill until eight thirty. Um, for, if that, uh, helps anybody, they need to do something in mid, in the meantime.
Do all of you know that Mark Clark retired today?
Yep.
I read that, but I was out here. I wasn't able to, uh, attend or end of the month, huh? That was today.
Yep. That was today, last day. Yep, we gave him a major award last night.
Did you?
North Reading, framed.
Wow, a picture of North Reading, huh? He probably had several of them somewhere. He probably took it for all we know.
I know, right?
All right. You still looking at that, trying to see if he shows up? Danielle?
Yeah, I just let a couple, uh, more people in, including Bruce Wheeler, um.
Okay.
But I have not yet seen David.
Well, since Bruce is now here, Bruce, you there?
I am here.
So we have an issue, Bruce.
Okay.
Uh, David Rudolph, our fourth member.
Yes.
Was stuck in Florida for most of the day today. He's right now on a plane. Uh, he's gonna get off. I don't know, I see eight twenty-four, he lands or eight thirty-five is what Ryan saw on his tracker. Um, so we can wait until we get, uh, done with the Anthony Road subdivision, uh, opening. And then do you guys, I don't know, maybe quarter to nine, nine thirty, nine, you know, something like that, nine, nine o'clock? Or we could reschedule you to something else. It's up to you guys, I think, right now.
Yeah, nine o'clock's no problem.
All right.
Uh, so, uh, I'll, uh, I'll call the other guys and let them know, so that.
Yeah, I know, uh, Brad's online right here, so he just heard what you said.
Okay.
And Peter, I think, is online. Is that correct, Brad?
Yes, he is, and I see that Larry, the architect, is online as well.
Okay.
So they all. Go ahead.
So, uh, what, what time do you want us to, to, uh, jump back on the Zoom? What do you think makes the most sense?
Well, if he gets in and calls in as soon as he lands.
Yeah.
He may call in in twenty minutes.
Okay.
So you may want to just stay where you are.
Okay, I.
You know.
I've got plenty of work to do with this. I can just leave this on and it's, it's fine.
Okay, great.
Um, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. So Danielle, that submission you're gonna do on Friday.
Yes.
That's to do with, what was that again, though?
The housing choice designation, which is different from the other housing choice legislation. I mean, it's part of it, but this is a part of the program that allows towns um, who have issued a certain number of residential building permits over a period of three to five years um, to access additional grant funds.
Okay.
There's no obligation, excuse me, on the part of the town, once you're in the program. It's just, you can just apply for additional programs, um, additional funds, and it can be for a very wide variety of things, including infrastructure, all kinds of things. Um, and it uh, is something that also gets you higher scoring on uh, Mass Works and other big state grants, and it also um, we've been told uh, allows for better um, borrowing rates for certain types of bonds. So um, we do qualify because we have already hit our um, you know, number of our benchmark for the number of building permits that were issued over five years, which is an increase, you know, over five years of um, you know, uh, more than five percent. And there's nothing more we need to do except submit our application. Building inspector certifies the building permitting data, um, the town administrator signs off and we become eligible pretty quickly for a variety of additional programs.
Do they, do they, um, do they give us a list of all the different grants that we can apply for, or do we just pick a grant and, and apply for it and see if it covers it, or how do you, how do you?
So it's actually, it is one grant, it's the housing choice grant, but it, it has within it a lot of different um, types of projects. So it's, it's really, it's, it's the one grant that becomes available to us, but it's, it's a huge variety of stuff that they fund, um, different kinds of, you know, construction or design or planning. Um, it's, it's a very flexible kind of a grant program. Um, but then in terms of the other grants that it helps us with, um, Mass Works, and then I don't know what the others are, but there are a few big state grants that it gives us um, additional scoring points on, just by, you know, by virtue of being a housing choice designated community, we already are more competitive for other grant programs.
When does, how long are we uh, eligible for that, once we?
We get a designation for, I think it lasts three years. We don't have to reply every year, so.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's really, there's no downside to it, really, at all.
Good, good, good. Now, word from David. I texted him. See if he was, to get out of Jet, on JetBlue. I think, I think that he can't get out on that. That wifi is just a local wifi. And that was the one that was just jumping on the meeting tonight, wasn't I? Warren, did you actually scrape any streets today?
No, no, they pretty much salted the whole thing down, so. I think they get paid for that, by the car companies. The more salt they put down, the more cars rust out, the more new cars sold, you know? Well, the car companies all donating salt to the towns.
I think you're right. Forget how many tons New York City had. They were talking about that down here.
Yeah. It just chews the cars right up. It's incredible.
Yeah.
Your, your theory assumes there's any steel left on these cars, though, or? Well, uh, that's true. Uh, one of, one of my pickup trucks is all aluminum now, so. Um, but it's still got a steel frame, so you still got some uh, steel there for those uh, for those little those little bugs to bite into and chew up, so.
Yeah.
But it's amazing.
You got a Ford, huh?
Yeah. Yeah. And that, and one, I got one that's sick, that's um, almost six years old, but over five years old. It was the aluminum body. And um, it looks, you look underneath and it looks like brand new underneath. All of the aluminum parts all look like brand new.
Yep.
Yeah. But in the, and the, and actually, they seem to be doing a better job of coating the steel to slow it down from rusting away, but it still begins to chew at it. Then a bike trucks out of Canada, because in Canada, they have a law about that.
Do they?
Absolutely. If the frame or anything like that rusts out, they, they'll make, give you a new car, a new truck or whatever.
Wow.
They um, we don't have that law in this country, you know? It's a consumer protection law that we haven't adopted, which we should have, but anyway.
Danielle, when we're gonna discuss that driveway? Uh, issue?
Which driveway issue?
The Hop, Hop Kington?
Oh.
Is that on one of our meetings in the future?
I, I think we should put it on a meeting in the future.
I think we should.
Yeah. I do, and I still need to sit down with the new town engineer to go over the recommendations we got last year from a consultant for our subdivision changes. Um, it has been difficult with having a big space between the two engine, town, town engineers, but I, I will sit down um, with our new town engineer and talk it over.
Yeah, Dan never got a download, did he?
Um, no, I'll have to, I'll give him the whole background.
Yeah, okay. Right.
Twenty-three plus years, I've never heard you be this quiet.
Who, all of us?
Yeah.
We're not in the same room, that's why.
Just thought I'd mention that.
Uh, it's okay, Debbie.
My minutes will be short.
Well, wait.
Yeah, I know, right?
Yeah, it, it'll, at some point will change, I think.
Mm-hmm, I think so too.
Hey Chris, are you down there on vacation or are you uh, working?
No, I'm on vacation.
Okay, good.
Jay wanted to see if she could survive with me for, you know, like a month.
Didn't kick you out and tell you to go find something to do?
No, not yet.
That's a safe answer, not yet.
Yeah. Well, and I just, I was, I was in uh, I went to my buddies at West, in uh, West Palm to watch the Honda Golf. I was there for three and a half, four days. And she came to do his fly, well, their flowers, his Dan and his wife's flowers at their condo. She missed me. That's what she said. I don't know if I should believe that or not, but.
I don't think she was even aiming at you.
Nah. Oh, yeah, you're funny.
Yeah, a number of years ago, I was working in Reading and uh, at a, at a, this, this gentleman's house. He was very much an older gentleman. He's like about, he was eighty-five or eighty-seven or something.
Yep.
And he would, uh, he had, it's a small farm. He would go out every day, get up in the morning early, have his breakfast, go out and work all day. And uh, well, I talked to him and he said, yeah, I get up and I, my wife makes breakfast for me, but then kicks me out of the house and I can't come back until noon time. And then I can come back and I can have dinner, I can have lunch, and a shot of whiskey, and then back out the door. I don't wanna see you again until supper time.
Wow.
But he was in excellent shape. I think that kind of work ethic was, you know.
Yeah.
Was good for him, you know?
Wow.
Well, I could tell you guys that after all this time of COVID and working from home with two small children, my wife and I are pretty much getting close to that arrangement.
I know, Jeremiah, I didn't get, I didn't get the chance to stay home during COVID. I was out at people's houses every day.
Yeah. Yeah, I did, I was too. I mean, obviously, I, the construction business I was doing was uh, going full force at that time, and, and you didn't really come in contact with anybody. Basically, you're out in the, out in the, by yourself, on, on a site, on a machine, you know, so not really, uh.
Yo, you're, you're, you're in good shape, but I had to go inside pieces houses and.
Yeah, see, I didn't see, so that was the thing. Kind of dodged the bullet there.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I survived.
So far.
Well, you know, I got it in Sep, late September of twenty-one, uh, twenty-two.
Yep.
But not, not badly, thank goodness.
Keeps coming around and coming around. That's the thing, you know?
Yeah, it's gonna be like the flu. It's never going away.
You're probably right. Hopefully, it doesn't get any more virulent than it is now.
Right.
Because um, well, there's, there's, everybody says, oh, the pandemic's over and there's only a hundred people a day are dying. Like, really?
Yeah.
Really? What if you, what if somebody of your family is one of those hundred people? What do you think about that, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. That ain't over.
No. So they read seven million people worldwide on that?
Yeah.
At least.
I mean, it certainly doesn't hold a record for the number of people killed by a plague or a, or a um, you know, or, or a virus or something, but uh, it's still, still all real people.
It's a lot of people.
It is. We still don't know, there were still some people that are suffering from long COVID, you know, long lasting effects from this.
Yep.
We still don't know how that's gonna play out.
We don't. We don't.
Uh, Danielle, wh- while we're at it, uh, you might have mentioned this before, but with the MBTA community stuff, there's been interesting kind of news about that with the other communities and how they're responding to that. Um, is there any kind of discussion amongst you and your colleagues at the other towns on, you know, the different approaches that people are taking?
Yeah, um, a lot with our neighboring communities. Um, we, those of us who are in the, the regional housing services office, so North Reading, Reading, Saugus, Wilmington and Woburn have been talking a lot about how the different approaches and it, it's a little tricky because each of our cities and towns um, have different situations. Some, most of them have MBTA facilities right there. Um, so they have to have their um, districts within a certain distance of the stations. Um, we don't, we're not in that situation. We actually have fewer restrictions on us than some others do. Um, it's, so we really have a very unique set of circumstances between every community, so no two communities are really doing the exact same thing, but it's, it's been a struggle. I haven't heard any community say, yep, easy for us to handle this. Um, we know exactly what we're doing and uh, it's no, no big deal. I mean, everyone's really got um, quite a, a puzzle to figure out. Um, I think our, without getting too far off, because I know it's not on the agenda, but I think our biggest problem right now is that there is a special permit requirement attached to Aquifer Protection District properties, um, when they go more than fifteen percent impervious. That was our only special permit in the target zoning district, and so now I'm concerned that that might prevent us from um, fully implementing that district, but I, we, we're still, we're looking at it. We're going through the compliance model. Um, I don't know yet whether it's an issue. We may still have enough capacity for what we're required to do. Um, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's big. It's a big job. It's, you know, it's a big project to figure out, but yes, we have been talking to the other communities about it.
Well, if anything, it's good to know that there's others that are willing to take more drastic, you know, open positions than we're required to, and they're gonna set the standards for how everything's gonna get enforced, so. That's, that's very convenient when other people are, you know, taking that fight and we don't necessarily have to, but.
I think they're probably, they're gonna wanna, at some point, because there are, there are communities, there are enough communities, I think, that would have a difficult time meeting all the criteria, that there's gonna be some kind of a, a waiver based on your, based on some particular item that is common to all the, to all the, all the uh, towns or cities, they can't make, you know? They're gonna have to create something because they can't, well, I mean, they shouldn't ask us to do something that's impossible for us to do. I mean, without uh, without some kind of criteria to uh, some kind of the ability to, to um, get a waiver of some kind because it's just plain not possible.
Yeah, they're not, they're not giving any waivers on this, are they, Danielle?
Well, not yet.
No, uh, not right now.
But we can't be the only town in that, in that particular situation.
No, some towns are in, uh, Wilmington is actually in a sa- a similar situation with their Aquifer Protection District requirements. Um, it's definitely something we have in common, but they have even more restrictions because they have to have their area in their areas around the train stations, and there's really no flexibility on that, and there, I don't know that they have found their solution yet.
Well, I would say that, that, again, you know, to come, to come to town, to come to Wilmington and say, you have to do this, and then Wilmington say, it's just, it's impossible. You know, it's for them to ask them to set out and take something away from them, why have to ask them to do something that's impossible? I think there's gotta be some kind of, there's gotta be a little bit of understanding someplace in the system.
It's been very challenging for a lot of towns.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure the state's not gonna give up easy. I mean, because the state has been on this housing kick for the last few years and they keep pushing it harder and harder as the, as the situation gets worse. As they find more and, uh, more and more people unable to find housing or a, able to afford housing, so that's gonna be, that, that push isn't gonna slow down too much, but at some point, you know, reality has to rear its ugly head and say, you know, you just, it's just not possible. So you can't be taking something away from the community or penalizing a, a community for not being able to do something that's impossible. But they're not gonna give up easy. I do agree with that.
It's an interesting uh, thing they created in nineteen, in the sixties, though. We're gonna solve all this issue with the forty B, right? We're gonna solve all this issue with the forty B, right?
Yeah.
Nobody started using the forty Bs until, what, the nineties, Warren?
Yeah, yeah.
Once, once the land all started to get really bad.
Yeah.
They could start squeezing more out.
Well, once the properties became so expensive, they needed to be able to get more units on them too.
Yeah, that too.
And the towns, see, we are, we are the victims of our own rules and regulations that we made. I mean, I remember going to Wakefield once and, and with a friend of mine going up, driving up this subdivision with six or eight or maybe ten brand new houses and it was a twenty-four foot wide road, no curb, no drainage, no nothing, and the houses were selling for big money.
Yeah.
But, but they, they didn't create, they didn't cause, in, in the subdivision control process, they didn't require them to do, to build so much infrastructure that it pushed the process, the value of the property so high, it demanded a very expensive house in order to, they didn't do that. So the houses were affordable reasonably and in Anandover, the same thing, off of May, off of Route twenty-eight, one of the sidewalks there where there's a, I drove up there and there was some, somebody from up in Anandover, a friend of mine told, brought me, said, come look at this if you wanna see what happens. And Anandover, the same thing, there was no curbs, no sidewalks, no, you know, nothing, just, just great, big, huge houses.
And today they're selling for over a million dollars, so, so those great, big, huge houses.
Yeah, but in the day, in their day, they sold for more reasonable money because they weren't buried in infrastructure costs.
Yeah.
I remember Steve Cazasi used to tell me, you should only, he, he used to say, don't, don't only put sidewalk on one side of the street, don't, don't put sidewalks on both sides, no matter what they say. This is because if you do, you're gonna create an infrastructure issue so that twenty-five years down the road, you can't afford to fix one sidewalk, never mind two.
Two, yeah.
And so he, he was a big fan of, no, don't do it. So, because, you know, we had it already in our subdivision control, we never changed it, but. And of course, most of the time in the subdivision, you see people walking through the subdivision, they're on the street.
They're on the street. I know, I know.
So it's always been a pet peeve of mine, seeing them walk down the street with a.
You're not the only one, Warren.
Nice sidewalk over there with nobody on it, everybody in the middle of the street.
Yep.
That, because we gave them a thirty-foot wide street, you know? So they figured there's plenty of room to work, walk on it.
Well, unfortunately, on the flip side, me and my five neighbors, you know, it's virtually a danger zone for our kids in front of our house because we don't have sidewalks.
Right.
And we've got our school right down the street, majority of the neighborhood has access to it, you know, and it's, uh, yeah, sidewalks are tough and.
Yeah, well, I'm a firm believer in sidewalks.
One thing, not enough sidewalks are another thing.
Well, I'm a firm believer in sidewalks in, in, you know, for safety, obviously, but, but to have a, a small subdivision with a sidewalk on both sides, I'd rather put sidewalk on one side. If they wanna build another one, let's put it someplace where we need a sidewalk. And I think we've done that a couple of times, right, Chris? We had them.
Yeah.
Move that sidewalk, don't only put one sidewalk here, put the other one someplace over here.
That's right.
So.
We try to do that.
Yeah, we don't always get the ability to do that.
Yeah, those dead end streets need one sidewalk. They don't need two.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Even if it's a through street and if it's a, if it's not carrying a lot of capacity or never will.
Yeah.
You don't need, you don't need one on both sides of the street.
It's also part of a bigger issue of signage and crosswalks and visibility.
Oh, yeah.
Certain parts of town that do this good and there are certain parts of town, cough, cough, marble that, that don't do it very good. So it's, it's a combination approach, but a topic for another day. I will say, I'm a little disappointed with, you know, DCR and how they manage the Harold Parker adjacent properties because it definitely seems like, you know, North Andover, Andover roads have much more visible signage when it comes to trail crossings and things like that. And do through the portions to North, North Reading. And I'd be very curious on who's, you know, making those kind of decisions.
Where do they live?
Well, I just, I mean, I don't know who takes the leadership of trying to make those places safer.
Yeah.
I see mountain bikes and hikers go in front of my house every day and people treating marblehead like a race.
Highway, yeah, it's, it's very fast there. Well, I live on a dead end street and it's marked as twenty-five, but I get them thirty-five miles an hour down the end of the street. And we got little kids that. Yeah, or to get away from me, one or the other. And we got little kids on the street too, you know, and there's signs out and they still go fast on the street.
Oh, David is on.
David's here.
Howdy, everyone.
Hello.
Can we, Brad, are you there, Brad? Brad Latham. I see him. Bruce, are you there?
I am here.
All right, let's see if we can get, we got, David is here in-house on the phone.
Terrific.
Courtesy of JetBlue.
You poor bugger, you. You've been, you've been there since six this morning?
My family and I arrived in Orlando at five-thirty in the morning.
Oh.
It's just arriving.
That's horrible.
It's horrible. It's horrible.
Stringing you along every two hours. It's another two hours, another two hours, another two hours.
Ruins the whole vacation.
Well, David, David, it's great of you to join. That's, that's incredible to go through all that and still join the meeting. That's awesome.
Well, this is important to North Reading and I know it's important to you guys too, so that we all be here to vote, so I'm, I'm all for it.
All right, so I think Brad's off, must be off doing something.
Oh, I'll call him.
Yeah, give him a phone call, Bruce. I see Hayes is here. Peter, are you on? Can you hear me, Peter? Unmute yourself?
Oh, yeah.
They, you know what? They must, they, they got tired of listening to you. I like, I love listening to you guys. Apparently Brad and Peter don't enjoy it the same way I do.
Actually, Hayes is on now, so that must be Peter, right? Is that you, Peter?
I'm here.
All right, great. We got, uh, and then we got your architect too, Bruce. Who's that?
Uh, Larry Reeves.
Larry, Larry, are you around?
I am here.
All right, great. So all we need is Brad. And he's, he's the guy, well, we could ask Bruce. Get out of this. My other iPad froze up. I got, I'm playing with two iPads, one to see all these, everybody's face and the other one to, to look at plans.
Okay, Brad's gonna be on in one minute.
All right, perfect.
He's just going upstairs. I think he, he was going for a little snack in between.
That's why he couldn't hear me. It's almost impossible not to be able to hear me. Citrus kicked me out, Danielle. Is that surprising?
Oh, you logged back in?
I got, I'm logging in now.
What, share file kicked you out?
Yeah. There we go.
It happens to me sometimes.
Hi, gents.
There we are. Hi, Brad.
I snuck downstairs to get some dessert.
Yeah, well, where's mine? I know it's a long way. It's a long way, Brad. All right, so David, are you there still?
David?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, good. And let me see, Ryan's here. Ryan, you're there?
I am here, sir.
All right, Warren. So we have, we have the four-person quorum. Jeremiah is on also, but he did not qualify. He missed two meetings, I guess. Is that correct, Danielle?
Right.
Right, so we have to have qualification of everybody only missing one if they had missed a meeting. So what was, did everybody on the planning board, were we all satisfied?
We had a couple of things. Did we, did, did we get a final sign off from the peer review engineer?
Yes, we did. Yeah, the final letter should be in the file.
It is. Ryan, you have any questions?
No, I wasn't there for the last meeting, but I did watch the video to catch up and I think, think they addressed all the concerns. I, I do have to say, in just driving by it since the prior meeting and, you know, since hearing about this project, I'm particularly excited to see the improvement with regards to the crosswalk there. I think that's gonna be a real, real benefit to the area and the people trying to cross sixty-two right there. So that's an exciting addition to that. So no other comments.
Okay, David.
Yes, Mr. Hayden.
I know you had a question about elevations. Were, were they satisfactory once you got to see them?
Yes, once I raised a concern, the design team addressed it and.
All right. Perfect. So now we're.
I'm good.
Now we're on to Bruce and Brad. You, Danielle shared the conditional approval with you. Do you have any questions?
She did, and we, and we have no issues or questions, at least I do not. Bruce, do you have any?
I do not.
Okay, so Danielle, do you have any questions or problems?
No, everything outstanding has been resolved.
All right, so I think that goes back to Mr. Carroll now. Mr. Carroll, do you have a motion for us on this?
Don't believe I do, do I?
Yeah, there is a motion, but Danielle, did we have some waivers that we had to give on this?
I apologize, I found it.
Not for site plan review, no.
Okay.
No. And I think if there was anything with regard to the parking location, it was going to be with the zoning board of appeals, not, not with the CPC.
Okay, okay. So if you would, Mr. Carroll.
Um, hang on a minute, Chris, did we?
Yes, sir.
Do we, do we close the public hearing yet?
Oh, I have not.
Okay, we best do that.
I, I will close a public hearing now.
Well, do you wanna close it before you see if there's any more public input?
Oh, yeah, I should ask about public input. Is there any?
Be honest here, but.
No, no, that's, thank you. Thank you. Is there any public input for one forty-six, one fifty Park Street? All right, hearing none? I'm gonna close the public hearing? And Mr. Carroll, would you please read that motion?
Yes, Danielle, this will be dated this evening, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Chairman, I move the Community Planning Commission vote to approve the plan entitled Site Plan eighteen eighteen on the Commons, Senior Housing Facility, one forty-six to one fifty Park Street, North Reading, Mass. zero one eight six four, dated August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, last revised January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, drawn by Hayes Engineering Incorporated, subject to the terms and conditions of the certificate of conditional approval, dated February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, as amended this evening.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Pierce. Hi, David, are you there?
I'm here.
All right, so is there any discussion on that, on the motion for the conditional approval and this project? Hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 No roll call.
Right. Mr. Rudolph, how do you say? Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Carroll, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Myself is I and Mr. Jeremiah, you need to, are you there?
Yep.
You need to abstain, right?
Yep.
Okay. So it is four in favor and one abstention. So this project has been approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much and to all the board members for the time you spent going through this with us, and I think it'll be a very good project for the town. Thank you.
Uh, thanks to everyone. I really appreciate all the time and energy I put into this and we, we will make sure that it's wonderful.
You're right there. We'll all see it every day. Hard to hide.
Yeah, Bruce, you've done a pretty good job on the stuff so far that you've done. We've appreciated your dedication to the, to the project, so we look forward to working with you on it.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night, gentlemen.
Good night. Good night, thank you.
All right, so we're, we're at sixteen Anthony and three forty-six Haverhill Street. We're a couple of minutes late. Sorry to keep you all. Who do I have in-house for the proponents?
Uh, that'd be me, Bill Hall with Civil Design Consultants.
Anyone else, Bill?
Uh, the applicant, I believe, is with us, Joe Cataldo. Uh, I think I saw him on here.
Yeah, I'm here also. All right, good. All right, sorry, sorry to keep you so long. I know we're a few minutes late getting going here.
No problem at all.
You know, we had, we had a deal with trying to get one done. We needed to have four members.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. All right, so Danielle, do you wanna, uh, you have anything to say before we start or just gonna give it to the engineer?
Um, well, my one question would be, um, before we read the public hearing notice, um, whether David is staying on the call for this hearing? I just wanna track.
Yeah, Danielle, I am.
You are, okay.
I'm not going anywhere, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
I apologize for the delay in hitting unmute and mute every time. I just don't want to give you guys the full background.
No, it's okay, David. We understand. That's why I asked for you when it was necessary.
Thanks.
Perfect. No, that's all I had. If you wanna go ahead with the public hearing notice.
Who's got that? Does?
Um.
Is it in the?
It's in the share file.
Oh, where is it? I don't see it under this project.
Um, probably in the application package. Let me see.
Okay. Cause we, we do need to read that.
Yes, we do. Um, legal notice and application. Okay, should I just go ahead?
Would you please?
Yes. Um, notice is hereby given that the North Reading Community Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three in room fourteen of the North Reading Town Hall and online at eight fifteen PM on the application of J C J Realty and Germano Family Trust for a definitive subdivision plan entitled definitive subdivision plans for seventeen Anthony Road and three forty-six Rear Haverhill Street, North Reading, Mass. Oh, one eight six four, dated December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, for the property located at seventeen Anthony Road and three forty-six Rear Haverhill Street, North Reading, Mass. Map thirty parcel sixty and map forty-seven parcel twenty-five. Um, instructions are given on participation in the hearing online and by phone, a copy of this plan is on file in the Community Planning Commission Office, Monday through Thursday, eight AM to four PM and Friday, eight AM to one PM. And may be viewed by visiting the Community Planning Commission website advertised February ninth and sixteenth, twenty twenty-three in the North Reading transcript, um, notified to Butters and the town clerk.
Thank you, Danielle. So everyone, this meeting is being recorded. Uh, what we're gonna do is we're gonna have the applicants uh, give us their take on the project. And questions go to the board first and then to the public. And I'm not quite sure how far we're gonna get along tonight because there might be so many questions that we're gonna come back to another night. Um, and I'm not sure what that next date would be. What day? Do you have an idea what that date would be, Danielle?
It depends how much more time the applicant would like in between meetings. Um, currently our scheduled meetings are March seventh and twenty-first. It depends how much more time, uh, the applicant would like in between meetings. Um, currently our scheduled meetings are March seventh and twenty-first. Um, March seventh is a week from tonight, so it may or may not be enough time for them. Um, I can look up the April meetings as well.
Okay. We might go, I'm not sure what they would look for, so. All right, so Bill, you want to lead us off with, uh? A bit of a presentation here?
Yeah, I'm just gonna share my screen here and get these plans out. Okay, so hopefully everybody can see that.
Yep.
Uh, so as I said earlier, I'm Bill Hall with Civil Design Consultants, representing the applicant, Joe Cataldo, for this definitive subdivision. Uh, I just want to start off by saying we received a number of comments from various departments, a few peer reviews, and we're in the process of addressing that. As well as addressing comments that we received during a conservation commission hearing just a couple of weeks ago. So we're in no place to make any sort of decisions tonight at this hearing. Uh, just kind of want to get this in front of you, open it up. And get any preliminary comments so that we can address that as we go through addressing the rest of the comments that we have. So. This property is seventeen Anthony Road at three forty-six Rear Haverhill Street. Uh, this is our existing conditions plan. We have seventeen Anthony Road, which is the frontage and access to the site in this portion. It's a small, uh. Approximately twenty thousand square foot lot, I believe. And then we also have a three forty-six Rear Haverhill, which contains this strip that goes out to Haverhill Street. And it opens up back here, and our match line is here, and it continues out to the Scug River, uh, where the property boundary is. As you can see, there's a few pockets of wetlands. There's one located in this area, that little strip. There's another wetland located behind a couple homes on Anthony Road, and then there's this larger complex. All the way over to the west associated with the Scug River. Uh, the whole area of the two boxes parcels combined is approximately fifteen point two acres. There used to be a single family dwelling on seventeen Anthony Road that's been demolished. Um, and then the remainder of the parcel. Of Haverhill Street is all wooded. Uh, this dash line here indicates a property, uh, sorry, power easement. It's a two hundred foot wide power easement that starts at the abutting properties of Anthony Road and goes two hundred feet wide into our site. We've been working with National Grid for the past year to eighteen months to get the plans to a point where they're ready to approve them. We think we're pretty close to that, but they won't make any decisions until we have an approval from the commission and also from the conservation commission. In addition to the wetlands and that restriction, we also have Zone Two, which is this line through here. Um, all of our drainage and sewer, uh, septic systems, all of that is outside of the Zone Two. There's a very minor limit of grading that goes within there that we'll get to on the next sheet. But otherwise, all of our work is outside of that Zone Two. Um, so the proposal for you is a six lot subdivision, of which there will be five new single family dwellings. Uh, the reason for five single family dwellings is we have these one, two, three, four, five located here. This other lot, Lot Five, goes out to the back and it's either all within the power easement here or within wetlands. Uh, obviously, there's a restriction. We can't build wetlands, and then the power easement, National Grid would not allow us to build anything through there at this time. Uh, the only way anything would get built is if they relinquish that easement. Uh, we've asked about that. Doesn't seem likely that they'd be willing to do that. Uh. The site is served by town water. We're posing a water main that connects into the main and Anthony Road and runs up. Into the end of the cul-de-sac, uh, terminating with a hydrant. And then each lot has its own onsite septic system, so all of these will have their own individual septic systems. Drainage is collected through a series of catch basins and manholes that drains down through the subdivision. And, uh, discharges into the infiltration basin here. This detention basin is intended to pick up runoff that runs from the abutting parcel directed over to, uh, our infiltration basin. Then there's a small portion of runoff down at the roadway that gets picked up by a, uh, storm scepter. It's a hydrodynamic separator ordered to treat the runoff before it discharges into the, uh, drainage system within Anthony Road. Individual roof drywells are also included. That's, uh. These rectangles here, uh, we've included those where we can. You'll note that. It's on these three lots. On these two lots here, we just didn't have room between having these two septic systems so close, and then also high groundwater table. Uh, all of this drainage has been designed to meet the stormwater handbook as well as, you know, local regulations. And, uh, as you know, the post-development rates can exceed the pre-development rates, and that's the, uh, standard we're meeting with this. This roadway has also been designed to the standards of the subdivision regulations with two exceptions. The first waiver that we'd be requesting is cover over a drain pipe. There's three feet required. We're proposing two feet in one location. So in this location at the, uh, interchange of these structures in the cul-de-sac, we have a two-foot minimum cover. Uh, that's just to try and minimize fill through the outside edge of this cul-de-sac. And it's not an area that's gonna see a lot of traffic, and the pipe is rated for a minimum of one foot of cover. So that's the request there. Then the second waiver that we're requesting is to allow a dead end greater than five hundred feet. Without a looped water main. So as I said, the water comes up off Anthony Road and it terminates, terminates at the cul-de-sac. Uh, there is, uh, a portion of right-of-way. I'll go back to the existing conditions plan. Uh, this is labeled as a future street on land court plans. Uh, it ties into Anthony Road theoretically. I think it's possible that we could tie in, but it's another approximately nine hundred feet of water main to get there. So that doubles what we'd, uh, have to install for that. And I'm not sure of the rights through here as well. I've heard that there's, uh, potential issues with rights getting through that. Uh. Right-of-way. That's another thing that we'd have to research should the commission be opposed to the waiver. Um. As I said, to start off with, there's still a number of comments to address here. Um, so, again, not expecting any decisions. What we would like to get direction on is the, just general feedback on this, and then also the waiver requests. To see if there's any substantial changes that we have to make to the plans. So with that, I'd like to open up to the commission for any questions.
All right, any, uh, Warren, you have any questions?
Um, I, I did read through all of the, this, the, the peer review, and there's quite a, there's quite a few questions in that peer review.
There is.
So, um, rather than me picking through them. I, I think I would just refer that peer review to the engineer and let them see if they can clear some of these things up. Um.
I, I think.
You know, rather, rather than us go through and try to pick it one or not, one or another, you know what I mean?
Right, I think that, that's something that should, should be done before we, uh. Outside of this meeting, because there's, there's, there's a few of them. That he needs, he needs to answer and go back to them to get an answer on it. All right, that, that's good. How about you, David? Are you there online? I know it's kind of tough for you.
Sorry about that, Chris. Uh, yeah, I, I, I agree with Warren. Uh, one of the questions I would have, there's a, a few, not only the peer, but the Sullivan, which is a, in a butter. Review, um, mentions about the wetlands being a little bit unsure, and so I'm just wondering, did you file an Anrad? It like, when was the last time the, the wetlands were flagged? Like, what's the record of the wetlands?
Uh, so we did not file Anrad. We went to, uh, file a notice of intent with the conservation commission. We had our first meeting with them two or three weeks ago. We had a sit walk scheduled for last weekend, but the snow threw a wrench into that, so tentatively, we have a sit walk scheduled for March eleventh. Where we're gonna go out and review all of the wetland lines out there.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, as long as the agent confirming the boundaries that you're, you've, you've shown or represented on your plan. Um, that's fine. It's up to you if you want to file an Anrad to kind of lock it in, but. That's, that's one question, and I think that'll put to rest some of the questions that are coming up just specifically on that. But as Warren said, there are just so numerous, I think, just using those reviews. As a guide as to what some of our questions would be, would probably be a good first step.
So, uh. Jeremiah?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I would just echo that. I mean, I read the material as well, and, uh, you know, it seems like there's plenty of opinions on the topic, so. Um, love to see some of those get, uh, hashed out.
Okay. Great. Mr. Mr. Carroll?
Great. No further comment.
Okay. Um, so myself. There's a few things in here.
If I.
Go ahead, Warren.
Let me just preface this, but, uh, I mean, I, uh, I'm glad I got a chance to see this, and I don't think that I, that, that you wasted your time coming here, because it gives us. And I, a chance to take a look at what you're doing here, and we may come up with some questions of our own. Uh, and I'm glad to at least get my first look at to see what your plans are. Um. Um, and to think about, you know, what else, what, what issues it might be that might need to be resolved, aside from the ones that the peer review engineer brought up, so, uh. Um, I'm glad that we at least got a chance to look at this and get a preliminary look at getting started with it, so.
Okay. Anything, anything else? Before I. Way in. Obviously, you know, you're asking for a waiver for. Length of dead end without. Uh, you know, without a water. Connection. Um, that's, that's kind of, that's right away in our ballpark. I agree with the rest of the board on. All those questions that need to be answered, and I think you should get back and get us, get answers to our, uh, consulting engineer on that. Um, I know that water. Groundwater. Um. Stormwater in this area is really tough on all of the neighbors. Um. And it's, it's a, it's a super huge concern. Who is that?
Two sun pumps in my basement on Anthony Road.
All right. Sir, sir, sir. You're gonna have to wait until I come to the, to the, to the folks. I do appreciate your comments, but we gotta do it the right way here. Um. You know, we had one of the new neighbors who didn't know anything about this, who heard it from. Her neighbors. She's brand new on this street. I guess she moved in, I think it was December. Um, and they were very concerned about this, and they had the project reviewed by an engineer. Once they, once they heard about it. Um, so we have that review, uh, to, to digest in all of this. Um, so water is the big issue. Not only is it. The portable water houses, but it's also that stormwater runoff. So, um. I'm gonna open this up to. The public, if participants could raise their hand. There's a little thing there. Um, we might be, I might be able to call on you by name. Um.
Chris, you're probably gonna have to eliminate the screen sharing so you can see all the people.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Sorry, let me, uh.
That's all right, Bill. All right, so. And I can't see everybody's. I'm on an iPad. I see about. Twelve people at a time here. One of them is me. Um, so.
Big screen, I'll help you, Chris.
Well, yeah, I was gonna ask for that help, Warren. I know you had a, you could, you could zoom everybody at one time, right?
I see, I do see a hand up.
All right, who is it?
Um, Luke Legere.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I proceed?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. Uh, Luke Legere, I'm from the law firm of McGregor, Legere and Stevens. I represent David and Lauren Cook. Who live at three forty-six Haverhill Street in North Reading, so they are direct abutters to the property, specifically the three, four, six, R. Haverhill Street property.
Okay.
Butts their land.
Okay.
So we certainly appreciate the opportunity to, to comment here. I also definitely appreciate what we've heard already from the commission members, which is that the peer reviewer who has looked at this project. Uh, has obviously identified a host of issues that need to be addressed. And really, hopefully, you had an opportunity to review my January twentieth letter to the commission. It's been a little while now, but that was submitted back when, uh, we thought we were gonna be starting this process a little bit sooner. Um, we've outlined, uh, a number of issues ourselves. A lot of them do go to water, as you just recognized, Mr. Chairman. This is a very wet area. There are existing conditions which cause great deals of flooding for the residents who live in the area. So stormwater, uh, septic, provision of water itself are all gonna be critically important aspects of this project for public health and safety reasons. Um, as I believe at least some members of the commission know, this isn't the first rodeo here for development of this property.
No, it's not.
That's right. That's right. There have been many, um, many proposals in the past. I myself have been involved in the, I think, most recent couple spanning the last twelve years or so. Um. And those have all either been denied or withdrawn. Uh, and really what, what that reflects in my view are the numerous natural and legal constraints that this property presents. Um, the application that was submitted to the commission does seem to be lacking a, a great deal of information regarding wetlands, water supply, drainage, septic. Impacts to the neighborhood generally, really all the issues I was mentioning earlier. Um, as Mr. Hall mentioned, there was a conservation commission meeting a couple of weeks back. Um, at that point, it became clear that the wetlands on this property were last flagged in two thousand eighteen, so I heard one of the commission members. Uh, asked that very good question. What's the status of the wetland delineation out there? And the short answer is. It's very, very old, and it's not reliable. Those expire after three years, and the flagging is five years old, and. It's not even clear whether that was ever actually confirmed by the conservation commission, so. Um, the CONCOM, as I understand it, is going to be using the same peer reviewer. Uh, that you are, um, to review the wetland issue, so hopefully. The peer reviewer in, uh, coordination with the CONCOM's agent is gonna be, you know, with two of them together, we'll be able to. Uh, really better understand the accuracy of the wetlands delineated out there. Certainly was a cause for concern for my clients. And the rest of us looking at this, that the Scug River is mislabeled on the project plans. That, that's not a great, not a great start for. Um, our confidence in the delineation of the wetlands out there. There are a number of, uh, submittal requirements that I don't believe have been met here under the commission's regulations. Um, I am not aware of an environmental and community impact statement having been filed for this project. That's required by. Your regulations and certainly given. The natural and environmental issues, uh, presented here, that's of, of great importance. Um, with respect to, to sewerage and stormwater, there have been a lot of issues on past proposals stemming from the soils out on the property. Um. Prior proposals were determined not to have some, uh, appropriate soils to be able to support the septic systems that were proposed. Um, so that's another piece of this. That's a really important piece of the puzzle that needs to be taken, taken a very close look at, and hopefully. Um, we can all be satisfied with whatever ultimately is, is worked out between the engineers, but certainly. Those soils out there have been problematic for, for past proposals, and we expect and, or suspect, I should say, that the same may be true here. Um, Mr. Chairman, you touched on the request for a waiver for, from a looped water main. Um, that, in our view, is something that we would strongly urge the commission to deny. Provision of adequate, adequate water supply is not a new issue out here. This has been flagged on past applications. It remains a major concern for my clients and their neighbors. Um, and so we do not view that waiver request as one that makes any sort of sense, uh, in this neighborhood and for this proposal. Um, with respect to the stormwater management report that was filed, uh, there is some critical lacking information there. I won't. Repeat it all here. That's, you know, better said by the engineers, but as, as you all have recognized. There's a lot of work to be done on that side of things to better understand whether Mass D E P's stormwater management policy is satisfied, because it's not at all clear from what's been, been submitted, uh, excuse me. Um.
Chris, if I may.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Warren.
I'm sorry, um. I read through all of these, uh, all of these reports, and you, you touch on a lot of the things that, that they peer review engineer did, so there's a lot of duplication in all of the. In all of the reports that were done, which is why I, I suggested that, that we try to get the peer review engineer. Uh, uh, information to the proponent and have them answer all those questions for us, because what, what it will do is it'll. It'll limit the number of things that they might have missed and then, and, uh, and the number of things that we have to, have to go after to make sure they're. They're correct, because there's, there's even a, you know. They're correct, because there's, there's even a, you know, I could go on for a long time too, but you and you, you are correct. In in the fact that these things did get missed and peer review engineer picked up all those items as well, did you get a chance to read the peer engineers?
I have not, um, I I actually didn't know until tonight that a peer review consultant had been retained, um.
You'd say, geez, I could have written this. You know, I'm ser- I'm serious, I'm joking a little bit, but I'm serious, there's, there's a lot of duplication in these, and that's why rather than. Rehash it too many times, I'd like them to give them the opportunity to answer. Um, as many of these as they can and let the peer review engineer. Uh, digest and and comment on those answers and if we can clear some of this stuff up, it will answer the questions for you as well as anybody else.
Sure, well, thank you, and I appreciate that and and I'll, I'll wrap up here, I'm certainly not trying to belabor these points or.
But what what that does mean is that um that some of the engineering issues and and the things a peer review engineer brought up are things that. The proponent and the peer review engineer and then ultimately us, you and me and the rest of the board have got to look at. But we want to hear from the neighbors too about uh issues, because there are things that happen in the neighborhood that the neighbors know all about. And we don't know till they tell us. So those are the people that 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 will give us some, some things to work with, the engineering does need to be, does need to be reviewed. And we'd like to see that, I'd like to see that happen so that we can all move forward with a little, at least some level of comfort on some of the items.
Sure, well, well, tha- thank you for that and um I'll just say that all, I appreciate your vote of confidence, I know a lot of engineers who I think are. Basically lawyers and very good at it as well, uh, I'm not a lawyer who's trying to be an engineer, I I certainly not gonna go beyond my limits, so at any rate. Um, I'll, I'll wrap up, I appreciate your time, I certainly understand that a lot of these issues have been. Addressed already by your peer view consultant, so I look forward uh to to getting a copy of those comments and reading them myself. Um, I would just add in closing that as we all know, this is a very sensitive site in a very sensitive area. It is located in an aqua for protection overlay district, uh, there are town wells that are all nearby and affected by work that's gonna be happening on this property, so. Um, those are really the issues of great concern to my clients. Um, in addition to some others as well that might be specific to them, but certainly those are are of great importance to them, so. I thank you for your time, I look forward to participating in the process as we move forward, um, and that's all for me for now, thank you.
Thank you very much.
For the record, I've been involved in pretty much every single one of these applications for all the years, because this is my thirty-first year.
I I I recognize you, Mr. Pierce, I recall having been in the hearing with you at least once, uh, maybe eight years ago or something like.
Yeah, two thousand fifteen.
We're familiar with the issues, but it doesn't mean that proper engineering can't solve a lot of them, so we give them the opportunity to do that.
Right, exactly, um, I know Matt had a que- uh, had some information for us. Matt, can you unmute yourself now and your name and address?
How you doing? Matt Tiberi thirty Anthony Road.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry for, sorry for interrupting early.
No, that's okay, that's alright.
Uh, I just, I have a problem with this project, I I have two sump pumps in my basement that go off twenty-four seven. We don't need any more water in this neighborhood. And I think everyone in on this call, or at least a lot of them have some pumps in their basement. I have two and they go off year round. I mean, I, I I've talked to the DPW guys, they've come down, they say, this, this Peter and Anthony Road, or especially Anthony Road. This is worse than Martin's Pond, you've got more water down here than Martin's Pond.
Yeah.
Are you kidding me? Like, and now you're gonna build million dollar homes behind us? I I I don't know, I I just, I I I'm frustrated.
Okay, Matt.
I, that, that, I just, if you can tell me the water's gonna stop. God bless you, but I don't think you're gonna tell me the water's gonna stop, and then you want to put an easement across the street from us, a little walkway here? Down here at at twenty-eight Anthony or thirty Anthony? I mean, I I don't know, I just, I I have a problem.
Okay.
I just, I I. Do million dollar homes need to be out here? I I, I mean, you tell me. Is it, this is old school North Reading, when you, if you ever grew up here, Peter and Anthony Road, this is old school North Reading. This is one of the original streets, let's keep it that way.
Alright, thank you, Matt.
Guys, I appreciate it.
Yep. Is anybody else, Danielle or Warren, that you can see hands raised, I can't, like I said, I can't, the 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 people I have, I don't see any hands.
Yeah. Yes, Fran Hashi.
Fran Hashi, would you? Unmute yourself and.
There you go.
Hey, you, you're, you're naming the dress again, please?
Uh, Fran Hashi, seven Wyoming Avenue.
Thank you.
You notice Martin's the computer stuff, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of beyond me.
Oh, Fran, you're pretty good at this stuff.
So my question is, uh, one of the questions is, you're gonna review this uh in accordance with your rules and regulations, correct?
Absolutely.
And from what I understand, he's only asked for two waivers. So far.
That's correct.
So, uh, I, and I know one of them is the, the water looping requirement. What about road layout? Are they gonna be consistent with your iron irons?
I believe they are, sir.
They got to be.
If, if, if not, we could, we, we could.
Do you still require two sidewalks?
It's in our rules and regulations, but that is one of the things that we will.
It's not a, uh, that's, it's a dead end road.
Yeah, it's dead end, it's not, so it doesn't need to.
Just one sidewalk will do it.
Okay, uh, have you got any input on the rates of runoff?
That's some of the things that we're looking at, we're trying to get real answers for right now.
Okay, how about, uh, we understand that there's a lot of ledge involved in the front end of the. Uh, roadway, roads, roadway, uh, has, has, have they looked at or indicated anything to you about? Uh, the dynamiting ledge and the impact that that's gonna have?
I don't think this particular application uh has, I love it, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill Hall. But I don't believe they've actually done any kind of thing to actually locate ledge, I know at a previous, one of the previous applications. They mentioned the fact that they ran into ledge in some of the places they dug, but I don't know if that passed on.
Yeah, so, um, we've done. Uh, wanna say twenty-six or seven test pits out on the site, uh. For various things, septic systems as well as drainage, and we haven't encountered any ledge out there. Um, there is a bit of a cut at the entrance and I know a previous proposal had an even deeper cut in that area, so perhaps. That was the concern of ledge, but we haven't encountered that, we don't think we would with the uh work for it.
Well, I I seem to recall that one of the neighbors who was in a butter to the entrance area. Uh, seemed to indicate that there was a lot of legend in that particular area. That's why I bring it up.
You know, that came from a prior application that was done with a, with a center, uh, but I don't know that we ever confirmed any of that.
Yeah, I don't think so either, but that's something that we'll, uh, we'll be looking into, I believe.
Thank you.
Is that it, sir? Anybody else need, wanna say something?
Just for the record, do be more opportunities, because this is just a very preliminary hearing and then as we go along, we'll, we'll continue. We'll have more meetings and everything as we get more information that we can share with you too.
Oh, uh, excuse me, Warren, this was not a definitive submission?
It, it is a definitive, Fran.
It is, but this is just, I'm sorry, I didn't, but I use the word preliminary, I mean preliminary for for this definitive. It's the first time we've heard of it, well, the first time we're really looking at it, so. So there'll be, and it's just a kind of a, a our first look at it and, uh, but it'll be back more than a few times as we work our way through the issue.
Alright, thank you, Warren.
You're welcome, sir.
Is, alright, Noel, I see your hand up.
It is up, hi, thank you.
Your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Noel Angelie and my address is one Anthony Road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, um, I'm just wondering with all of this, um, obviously we're having a really dry year. So the summer had no rain, this winter has no snow, is that taken into account with all of the water concerns?
Warren, you gotta, I know.
Basically, they, you know, there's a, the, the hydrology, the hydrology of it is that they do a, um. They, they identify what they call catchment areas or areas that will collect water and bring it to a particular point, and then they, you know, based on. You know, a five-year, ten-year, twenty-five-year, hundred-year flood or or storm, hundred-year storm, not flood, but storm. They'll determine that so many inches of rain per hour and they'll do a whole calculation on how that water will. Will run and has little to do with whether it rained this year or not. Um, and any of the soil testing that they do, uh, is not affected by rain either, because the, the markings in the. Soil are there for many years of water coming up and down, so this really doesn't affect the, um, the engineering much.
Okay.
I think, if I could just say too, if I could say too, this is, there's, there's a lot of, um. There's a lot of discussion too about those values being a little bit on the low side as far as historic right now, so we're getting. And seeing other towns and we've had the, the applicant right before us also adjusted their calculations to the NOAA fourteen or the NOAA Atlas fourteen. Rates which are are substantially higher values and I think that's, uh, that, that could do something we're looking at too, so I think. To Warren's point, we, we, you're covered as far as what the values are, even though it's a dry season or a dry area.
Yeah, I mean, just because I, as a, a neighbor in this town and we're, you know, up obviously about like the start of Anthony Road, but. To, to Matt Tiberi's point with, with the sump pumps, I mean, it's, it's really obvious when you get into those really wet. Times of year or years or seasons, um, because those houses towards the end of Anthony Road are pumping out a ton of water. Um, and I just, I think that if you were, if you were to come into the neighborhood now, you, you wouldn't see that, you wouldn't see what an issue it can be. It, it freezes up, um, I mean, it's, it's like tiny little rivers down there and so it. I just want to make sure that, yes, we're having a dry season right now, but that those, those bad seasons are taken into account with all of this, because it's. This is not representative of what we've seen normally.
Yeah.
Thank you, Noel.
Thank you.
Is there anything, anybody else else out there, I saw her hand, Danielle, you see anybody?
Joanne's iPad.
Joanne's iPad, Joanne.
Hi, Joanne Harris, forty-three Anthony Road, the very end of Anthony Road. Everybody's probably sick of hearing from me, because I try to go to every meeting, um. We, we have two subpumps not keeping up very well, so we gotta go to a third subpump. The river, when the water gets high, which it was in the last month, is getting closer and closer to our garage. And our outbuildings like our shed, it's, I've been in this house for twenty-five years. And we have never seen the water as high as it is now, I feel like the river is in our yard and it was never that way. So something is changing, I know the beavers are out, but the beavers are out a lot, but it's never been this bad. Um, we have no drainage past thirty-eight Anthony Road, so a lot of the runoff comes down into the cul-de-sac. And sometimes I call down to the townyard, asking them if somebody could keep, please come down and break a path through the walk, through the, um. The curbs and all that, because if they don't, I'm not gonna be able to get on my driveway. So we're very concerned about what this will do to the water levels, I know they think it's gonna fix it, but I'm not so convinced. And what do we, what, you know, I feel like we're collateral damage for them to have their beautiful houses. And what happens to us?
Okay, Joanne, thank you, and keep coming to the meetings.
I, yeah, I might them all the time.
Your input is always valuable.
Chris, I've, uh, just, if I could just throw something in there for Joanne, I've actually been down into that cul-de-sac before. When the town asked me to go to try to do something about it, it was two feet of water.
Right.
So, I've actually seen it and fixed it, so.
You have to break through.
That's right, it really happened.
Into the Scug River, you have to let it flow into the Scug River and.
Yep.
It's gotten worse, it's not getting better, it's getting worse.
Yeah.
So those are our big concerns, like how many subpumps can we have? And then, you know, all the subpump hoses that have been out, you know, when the wa- when it's really wet up and down Anthony Road, a lot of them got. Addressed when the road was paved, but they're still gonna happen and then the more subpumps, the more hoses. Just, it's very concerning, because now my home is gonna be, you know, getting water in it. That was able to be contained and like I said, it, it touches the corner of our garage now and in twenty-five years, it's never done that.
Yeah.
So, we will be at the meetings.
Okay, Joanne, thank you.
Alright.
Brooks? I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Ryan Brooks, two Anthony Road. My concern is Victoria Road, it seems to be the low point, Victoria Road connects Peter and Anthony. That's the first side street.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Water forms there, April, May, when we're getting the snow melting, when we're getting all the rain. And retaining ponds can be formed there in certain backyards. So my concern is if that's a low point in the neighborhood. And again, we start changing, you know, the water tables, I don't know if that's a, a poor drainage issue. But you guarantee you drive through Victoria Road and you're gonna see. Water just hanging out in tho- those properties, so. I guess my concern is, is that going to continue, is that only gonna get worse, you know?
Okay, well, that, that's good information and we will look into that throughout this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brooks. Anybody else?
Andrea.
Andrea.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the commission, I appreciate your time and consideration, my name is Andrea Paluca, I live at fifteen Anthony Road. Uh, my husband and I and our young son have been here since December, you made, um, note.
That was, that's you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too, thank you, yes, that is us, um, we heard. As soon as we moved in, probably about the water issues in the neighborhood, and so we thought it made sense to. Speak with a civil engineer, um, you've seen our letter, hopefully everybody else has seen it, it raises some, um, comments. With respect to the plans and with respect to our property. Um, we have concerns for the neighborhood, for our new, new neighbors, as well as for ourselves. Going forward about water, um, about the groundwater, about the drinking water. About potential pesticides leaching into our backyard from this detention basin that is right behind us. Um, when I look closely at these plans, I am very alarmed at this detention basin that. According to some emails between National Grid and Mr. Hall, has been increased, there used to be one on the other side of the easement, apparently. It was removed because of National Grid's concerns and now this one is larger. It has a wide opening for overflow that looks like it goes right into our yard. I don't understand that, um, Mr. Chairman, it would be, I would appreciate it perhaps if Mr. Hall could explain in layman's terms. Why this is designed in that way, why the second detention pond is designed in the way it's designed. I don't understand this, it would be nice if it could be just explained to all of us. How these plans were drafted, the thought behind it, which regulations were complied with in drawing these plans. Um, I'm curious if there's a special permit required here, because I've noted in the regulations. Uh, there's language about drainage will not be, uh, will not unduly subject hazards affecting health, safety, general welfare. Uh, there will not be an impairment of the integrity or character of the neighborhood, I don't know how you buy a house and knock it down and create a road. And how that conforms with the integrity and character of the neighborhood that's already here, I don't understand that. Um, I'm curious if there has been consideration for our leaching field in the plans, there is no. Um, delineation in Mr. Hall's plans for our leaching field, which you can see from the street is elevated. And I'm curious if there's a fifty-foot setback from this detention basin. Um, to our leaching field, I'm wondering what this. I'm wondering what this gravel road requested by National Grid is that's right alongside our property. I'm also curious about, uh, any streetlights proposed. Where those will be. Um, in terms of light pollution that could be brought into the neighborhood. Um, for our neighbors as well as for ourselves. Aside from any light pollution that could be created by, um, cars coming down this new road. Sorry, I'm just looking at my notes here.
That's all right. Go ahead.
And also trees. I think on some of the plans. There are some trees, um, identified as being. Street trees and so forth, and some bubble lines are indicated. For more plantings, but I do not see any plantings on either side of this new street. That also is sloping down into our yard. So aside from. The detention basin, um, I'm curious about the grading. Of the street and the grading of. The vegetation or, or whatever it will be on either side of the street. Um, and what plantings, I, I don't see them identified in these plans. So I think that's. Everything that I have concerns about. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think I could address some of those comments right now if you would.
Yes, sir. Make it quickly, though.
Yeah, absolutely.
You need to, I was, what I was gonna suggest is you need to talk to your abutters. There's so many issues here. And I don't think anyone's actually reached out to talk to the abutters at all. And, um, they have their own. Obviously, we're getting a bunch of them tonight. They have their own problems, their own issues, their own questions. And it pertains to their property alone. Besides the entire project. And, uh, I mean, she had a whole. And Andrea, right, had a whole, a whole. Uh, list of good questions. Uh, and I know, I know you can answer some of those questions right off the bat.
Yeah, I mean, if you prefer that, I can answer those questions offline. Um.
Well, you get, why don't, why don't you, uh, answer? I, I had the same question. Your, your five foot wide rip rap. Overflow. It does look kind of right, right at her yard.
Sure. So I'll share my screen here. Yeah. So we have this five foot wide rip rap overflow here. That's of concern. Uh. This is a line detention basin. Uh, so there's no intent to have any infiltration through this, uh, basin. That's the, the point of the line. We want to get it over to this other basin. Uh, the rip rap overflow. What we're proposing here is, uh, the property line via butters approximately elevation one ten running down this property line. So we're proposing to have this cut out slightly, just a couple of feet. So that anything that comes out of this overflow goes out and down into the roadway. Uh, it should be noted this overflow would only be triggered for storms greater than the hundred year storm event. Um, we're required to have one foot of what they call free ward. So any of your, uh, as far as the pond fills up, you're required to have an extra foot. Between your final overflow and then your burb. So if you'll notice, we have elevation one eleven overflow at one twelve for the burb. The intent is that this never gets triggered, that everything goes out the pipe into the other basin. Um, regarding the leaching field, uh, we do have the as-built information and tie cards on that. Uh, so we have looked into that and made sure it's greater than fifty feet away. Uh, we'll add that onto the plan and, and make sure that we call that out. Uh, and that's all for now. Uh, we'll be happy to address more of this offline than also in our, uh, response letter.
Okay, thank you. Joy, do you have a question?
Chris, just for the, just for the record for everybody, this, this meeting is being recorded. So, so that means that we've recorded all of Andrea's, uh, requests. So, so Billy, you'd be able to get, you know, this from the, from the, uh, planning board, a copy of this if you, if you don't. But Chris's comment about taking the time to go see each one of the abutters. It, we found that that is probably the, the best way to get things solved and to get everybody working together. Um, and a lot of the, the developers, the good ones that we work with, they do that right up front. They go talk to everybody first. Tell them what they're gonna do before they come to this meeting. So when the abutters show up, they already know more than we know. At that point, and, and it allows you to solve some of the problems upfront. So I recommend that you listen, that we'll take it, Chris's advice there.
All right. So I have Joy. Joy, are you there or not?
Yes, I am. Bruce Reynolds, Bruce Reynolds, twenty-seven Mohawk Road, Andover, Mass. Couple of things. Um, Mr. Pierce, I'm sure you're well aware of. National Grid's comments. I had previous plans that if there was to be a roadway that they would allow, it would have to be perpendicular. Not on an angle, and there would be no other things put underneath the easement. Um, that's still up to the utility company to decide. And. From the letter that I believe the two people have from the utility, they didn't really want the detention ponds put in there. So why aren't the detention ponds run into the storm drains down into Anthony Road? Um, the other thing is, in the paper. There was a transfer of title. On that property just recently. So I was wondering what, what's going on there with the transfer of title on that property?
I'm, I'm missing you on the transfer of property, sir.
In January, there was a transfer of title on the property that was listed in the local paper.
Was that for, uh, seventeen Anthony Road?
I believe so.
No, I can answer that if it's okay. Um, we.
So hey, one, one second. I gotta know who you.
All right. I'm Joe Cattavo, the developer.
Okay. Now, go ahead, Joe.
Um, we, there were two separate parcels, one known by Geronimo Family Trust and the other owned by J C J Realty Trust. All we did was put the back parcel into Geronimo Family Trust as well. So. It's just, it was always the same owner. There were two separate family trusts. It just didn't really make sense going forward. So we just. Put them all in the same parts, the same trust.
See, so you basically move trusts. One, one parcel from one trust into the, in another trust where.
Yes.
They're all owned by the same people.
Yes.
The trustees are all the same, just on a different, had a different name on it. Okay. Hopefully that takes care of that, that issue, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Do you have any other questions?
Well, the other thing was the National Grid, which I know Warren's been very familiar with. About nothing being put under the utility easement, including. Uh, the roadways all had to be perpendicular and that road is definitely not perpendicular. To it.
Right.
That's what it stated before.
Right.
Vote on or decide on something till National Grid says, yes, you can cross it perpendicular or not.
So, sir.
Twenty-two.
Sir.
Go ahead.
We actually, we actually went to our. Town council. And they reviewed this. And we can, uh, we can make a, um. A judgment on this, but it has to be. Uh, with. Um, reference to National Grid accepting or not. If they, if they don't accept it, then whatever we do doesn't work. Is that correct, Danielle?
Um, yes, we were advised to simply review the application, but placing conditions on it that any approval was also subject to National Grid. Um, so National Grid has, I, I think been. Pretty clear that they won't complete a review until local approvals are obtained. So. That's just where we are.
It's, it's a catch twenty-two.
Yeah, what, we're sort of gonna spend all this time and it may all be wasted.
Well, and sir, that's. There's not much I can do about it. We're working by the law right now.
Okay.
And, and that's what it says us that we, we should do. Yeah, we, we do, uh, it does take a little bit of our time, takes our, everybody's time. All right. Now, who was first here? I don't know. I think. Miss, miss. Pardon? Steven.
Good evening. Steven Corsetti, eleven Anthony Road, um, and current, uh, sump pumper. So.
You live on Anthony Road, you must have a sump pump.
I do, yes. And thankfully the town took, allowed us to connect up to the, the storm sewer to get the hoses off the road. So. A, thank you for that. But B, I just want to, uh. Reiterate the concerns we have with the town water feed up into that site being such a long dead end run. Um, and the concerns we have with low flow and possible contamination back into the, the town water supply. So I know, I know you'll look at that, but I just want to reiterate those concerns regarding that.
No, that's, that's all good information. Thank you, Steven.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Ed, you're next, sir.
Yes, uh, I've been with this project for a very long time.
Can you, can you give us your full name and address?
It's at the end of twenty-five Anthony Road.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
Okay, but, uh, I think I've been here since nineteen eighty-seven. Uh, on this issue. Nothing about the project as much as it is about the water. And what came before. I think if you go back to eighty-seven. Aqua for, Aqua for Protection, uh, laws. Wetland protection. Uh, the topography of the site. A lot of this has to do with the runoff. The pitch of that road is going in two different directions. One back to Anthony Road and one into the various holding, um, ponds. It's gonna create an issue. I suggest, especially for the board, to go and look at some of the previous history. Of the board and what their comments were back in eighty-seven. As to. How the land should be maybe deemed non-buildable. Saved for environmental purposes. I listened to Mr. O'Leary last night, uh, being praised for the deal, water deal with. Uh, the Andover folks. What's curious about that is that area back there, forty-six, uh, three forty-six R. Was an aquifer for future generations. So not only rescue the Scug, but also all the way down to the to, the town, uh, wells. And if you look at some of the discussion back then between the boards. I, I think the historical perspective, aside from this project. It has to be dynamite guarantees that this is not going to change one bit. As did the previous roads that were put in, uh, at the, the, uh, Havel's ends, end of the project. Uh, that kind of caused some complications with those properties. And more or less dammed. The water from going back to the, maybe toward Harold Parker and forcing it into our neighborhood. And I think a lot of people don't realize that there are. Uh, culverts under the street that go into Peter Road. And from Peter Road back behind the hood school. So there's, there's a very complex issue, a lot of history to it, a lot of reports and denials and. Pluses and minuses all already researched and, and. And found out, uh, even the issue of future string. And what that entails. Being the, one of the veterans on the street. The younger people that are moving into the neighborhood have absolutely no idea of what went on before. So I would hope that people will go back and do a little reading. I've been reading every single thing about this project, including all the stuff that was in your packet tonight that was posted on, online. So. I just would encourage everybody, I agree with, uh, Mr. Pierce. And there's just so much. Complexity to this project. That it's gonna take a while to sort it all out.
Yeah.
And as far as meeting with the neighbors. We, we did that once already at the, uh, Havel Country Club, Havel Street Country Club there. And, uh, not Havel Street, um. Our country club.
Hillview?
Still, I'm sorry. Yeah, Hillview Country Club. And, and we went through all of this and we expressed once.
Yes, sir. I, I understand that. But was that like in, uh, was that eighty-seven or was that in two thousand fifteen?
Well, the geology isn't changing. It takes.
Well, I understand, but they're, they're different owners.
I realize that.
They're different engineers. So.
No, well, I, I was. I'll cut to the point. I'm sorry.
There you go.
But I, I want you to just check out the history of this thing and what went on in the past. Just if anything, just for, for general knowledge. Okay, I rest.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Mr. Sawyer or Ms. Sawyer?
Yeah, Greg Sawyer, eighteen Anthony Road. Uh, in addition to all the, the water questions. Wh-what's, what hap, what's happening to the land on seventeen Anthony? Besides the road. Like, who, who's gonna own that?
Well, that, that, that was gonna be one of our questions too. That, they, obviously. The. Frontage or the roadway is not taking up all of the real estate that was seventeen Anthony Road. And something has to happen to that. Someone needs to own that. Um, so, uh, we haven't, we haven't even got to that point to talk to the developers about this yet.
Yeah, cause my, my neighbor now has to, he, he usually calls every month or so in the summer to get someone to cut it.
Oh, seventeen because it's been abandoned, right?
Well, yeah, they, because of some of the other stuff they did, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We've, we've had an eyesore now for a long time. We had. You know, we had bull, you know, machinery and all kinds of stuff. So.
Yeah, understandable. We will get with that too, sir. Is there anybody else out there? At this time, hearing, seeing no other comments. Um, we are gonna continue this public hearing. Danielle, do we have a time or date we can throw out there?
The two meetings that are coming up in March are March seventh and March twenty-first. So it really depends how much time the applicant wants. Um, we can also look.
I think seventh is too fast for them.
Yeah, it's only a week away.
Only a week away.
So time to respond to.
Yeah. And do it correctly and, and. Having our PR engineer respond to their responses. Um, to look at their responses is gonna be tough for a week. It's just us. I don't think that works. What do you think, Mr. Hall?
Yeah, I agree. Uh, I would suggest the twenty-first. I don't think the seventh would work.
Okay. So what do we have for time certain there, Danielle?
So we have nothing on that agenda as of now. Uh, we can make the hearing.
Eight o'clock? Eight o'clock. So we're few minutes to hall, eight o'clock on the. Twenty-first?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay. So, um, do we need a motion for that, Danielle?
Um, you can just move to continue the public hearing.
Move to continue the public carrier until. March the twenty-first at eight PM. Cause. Locked up again. So is that all we need? Or we actually need a motion from Ryan to do that?
I actually think there's one in there.
That's what I, I was thinking, but I can't, I can't see any. Ryan, do you see one?
Uh, I believe there is one. Hold on, I'm just getting to it. Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. I'm having trouble myself. I can't get there. It's the third time I had to restart the system.
Oh, there we go. One, I got it now. All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move the community planning commission. Vote to continue the public hearing for seventeen Anthony Road and three forty-six. Our Havel Street until, when do we decide on Tuesday?
Tuesday.
March twenty-one.
March two, one.
March twenty-first, eight PM. Twenty twenty-three.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say aye and I'll do a word. All right. Mr. Rudloff?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mr. Johnston?
Aye.
That is unanimous. So we're gonna continue this public hearing, folks, to time certain March to twenty-first. At eight PM. It won't start. Before that, may start a little after that, but I think we'll be right on time this time around. All right, all right.
Thank you. Have a good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Danielle, are we all done?
Um, we, the only other item on the agenda was the ADU bylaw, but with, um, the, the format of the meeting and Dave being in the air. It's up to you guys if you wanted to have the discussion next time. That's fine.
Yeah, I think it, next time would be better. It's late too.
Yes. Do we?
Can I just, can I just interrupt? Can I have, through the chair, can I speak for a second?
What's up, Rich? What's up, Rich? Real quick.
Yeah, well, the A D U, you know, we've been looking for, for a long time and we got a, a, a town meeting coming up in June. And, you know, I was really hoping and we really need this. And the last time I sat on your meeting a few months ago, it sounded like everybody was pretty much in agreement about what the A D U policy would look like. Um, and so the goal is really to get it into town meeting for June.
All right.
Can I, can I just finish, please? Can I finish, please?
Rich, Rich, Rich.
Go ahead.
Ri- really? It's eight, it's nine forty-three. We understand what you're looking for. Okay? And we are a, we are, you know, a body that we've been trying to work for this for a while, you folks, and we did other things and we didn't seem to get them. So we're working through on this. Okay, Rich? And as soon as we get it, we're looking at doing this next time. We're not gonna do it tonight. We got two people, not even in the state. Well, I'm, I'm not in the state. I guess David is back now, but he's been on the road for a long time. So we're not gonna discuss this tonight. It's actually, it's not on my agenda. Or maybe it is on my agenda.
It is on the agenda. It is on the agenda, Chris.
All right. I apologize. It's on the agenda as a discussion item. Um, so you know, I know you're upset, but we've been work, we, we've been working at this. And it's just, it's the way it is, Rich. I apologize.
Well, I, I just wanted to just point out that every day we're losing people because we haven't done this policy and regarding
Okay.
And we know we're losing people and the people that we're losing are empty nesters who are really critical to supporting our schools, supporting our systems. And every day that we don't get this done, we are losing more and more people. And you can check with David because David, uh, you know, he heard from the school committee, they recognize that having the seniors stay in our town is very critical to supporting the schools. And so there isn't a, a level of urgency here. And it's, and last time I sat in the meeting, it sounded like everybody was pretty much in agreement. Daniel had done, done a nice write-up. And uh, we need to, we need to get this moving forward. Because this is practically one of the most practical things we can do right now to keep the people in town who are under financial pressure. And then if we add in, you know, the new tax rate, plus we add in the potential of the sewer project hitting their tax bills, we, we could lose a ton of people. And so we need to try to mitigate this as much as possible. And so I'm really asking for you to, as a committee, to push this up and get this done and get it to us so we can all review it and get it done. And hopefully we can get it on the plate by June. And I just, I'm, I just, I'm, you know, I'm not upset. I'm just really just trying to express urgency that this really needs to get done. And, and if we can't get it done, then just say that. But I mean, it seemed like last time I was here a few months ago, we were, we were on the same, it wasn't me. Daniel had wrote it up something nice. Um, everybody was in agreement. Jerry was in agreement. Didn't sound like we had a lot of controversy left. So I'm just asking for this to be pushed up as high as urgent as it can go and try to make it for the June town meeting.
That's fine.
Rich, Rich, if I can, um, if I can just, I agree with you and I think, I think you're right. After the Jerry meeting, we made um, a lot of, advanced a lot of ground. I think as Jerry would know, I bumped into him in the, in the hall of some weeks back and, and actually saw it after I visited Danielle, but there, there's a little bit, some loophole stuff. We just need to get figured out. I don't think it's uh, anyway contentious stuff. We're just trying to make sure that to your, to your point is if there's any group we want to help the most, it's seniors and it's people that, that really need this. The loopholes that we're trying to do are from the people that are just trying to blow out their houses. And, you know, and do it in a kind of an, in an end around manner. And that's what Jerry's seeing, you know, so we're just trying to do that. But I, I, I think we're there, you know, I think we definitely have to get to it. And I apologize. I, again, I was supposed to be home for this and you know, we were supposed to not have a snowstorm and be in person. So I think we would have sat and spent some time on this, but it's been a crazy day for everybody.
I, I, thank you very much, David.
All right, Danielle. So let's, let's get that on the agenda for the twenty-first.
Sure, and um,
What, Warren?
Can we put it on for the seventh?
We can. We have nothing else on that agenda. I just wanted to, I was wondering if you do actually want to meet next week. Also, there's the special town meeting the sixth and then um, board and committee meeting on Thursday. So I, you know, it's up to you guys.
If we're gonna put it on the twenty-first, let's see if we can get a, a, a formal final draft um, uh, out on it. I know maybe you have
That's, that would be fun.
And I'll, and I'll work, I'll work to figure out to Danielle with your help, the language that Jerry and I were just again discussed briefly, but if we can get that figured out, I think that would help a lot.
Okay, cause I, I mean, I didn't have any further edits. I know, um, Dave, the last time that we spoke at this, at the meeting, um, we wanted one more discussion, but I didn't have any further edits to actually make. So yeah, if you can send me anything that, um, you'd like to see incorporated that we can talk about at that next meeting, I'll be sure to have that ready.
Great. And, and for the rest of the, the members, it's, it's more to suggest. So this is just, again, what Jerry and I thought are some loopholes. Um, obviously it takes the, the rest of the group to agree to that, but it's uh, it's just one it's one of my items. And I think somewhat Jerry's at least it's big more.
Leanne, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just, you know, as liaison, I just do wanna thank you uh, for taking the time. I, I mean, I know that it's important and uh, Mr. Wallner is passionate about it, but I don't want it rushed. You know, I, I, I would, I appreciate you um, taking your time, Dave, and thank you for um, you know, looking at those loopholes and making sure it's done right. Um, there's, there was a discussion last night actually that there's no guarantee to get it on in June. We can try. But it's more standard to have it on the October.
Mm-hmm, it is.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I, I don't want it rushed through either, you know, I, I want it, I would like it to be done right. So that's just.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Danielle?
No. Oh, so are, did we, are we, have we made a decision about meeting on the seventh or not?
Well, if you do it on the twenty-first.
Yeah, for them to be making as some, some more changes, you know, it by the time he gets, Dave gets everything due and we, we clear it through Jerry, it's gonna be more than a week. So.
Sure. And that was the only other thing we would have had.
Yes. Yeah, so I, I think if you could get it finalized with, I mean, David was the one with the, the biggest issues, which is fine. Um, if, if he can get those nailed, nailed down with Jerry and we can get it all figured out, come back with a real draft, we'll, we'll, it won't be a draft, it'll be a, a, a real document and we'll vote on that. You know, and we'll find out right there.
Is, the other thing is, Chris, is that we, you know, you know, this this is almost like a trial balloon. We're gonna do the best we can with it. We're gonna see what happens. And, and if we run into a problem with it, um, we can always make a change, you know, we can
That's right. We can always change it later on. That's correct.
Later on. So, but, but we need to, we need, we, I, we do need to kind of get started with it. Um, realizing that it doesn't substantially change what Jerry's been doing already. I mean, it's, it's, you know, because of the, it did legitimizes some of what's already happening.
Right, right, exactly. Yes, Leanne.
Um, I, I don't know how um, standard it is to check into another town, but I do know the town of Hingham um, fairly recently put, did this, made a plan for this. So I, I, I don't know if you wanna like, take a look at that and what they have there.
I think Danielle went around checking everybody's.
I didn't check everybody's. I checked a lot. Um, I'll certainly go to Hingham's and see
Yeah.
And they may be new, so they may have been working on it. When Danielle was looking around, so.
Yeah, just a suggestion, you know.
Sure.
Yeah. I don't think at this point, there's too many things that we've missed, um, cause we did start with Reddings, which was pretty restrictive. Um, in some ways, but pretty open in other ways. So um, so I think we've, we've looked at it quite a lot. So so yeah, we'll take a look at that and see if they've got some magic bullet that we haven't seen, but I don't think
You never know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Could be. All right, anything else? All right. We'll see y'all next week.
Or for those who are coming to the boarding committee meeting on Thursday.
Oh, yeah, I'll be there.
Yeah, I'll be there.
I won't be there, Danielle. I'll be, I'll be, I, I'll be on my way to Williamsburg that day, I think. Not sure. All right.
All right.
Thank you, David.
Thank you guys for putting up with
I'm sorry, David, I realized I kept muting you. I didn't realize you were you and I thought someone was trying to talk over you. So I kept mute. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. No worries.
Take care.
Thanks, everyone.